Special virtual meeting of the city council. And I do want to remind everybody that esta junta está disponible en español en el canal alternativo de la ciudad. City clerk, can I get roll call please?
Yes, thank you mayor. Where's Daniel?
Here.
Council member Monica?
Here.
Council member Paul Hernandez?
He'll be joining like.
Mayor approach him, Alejandra Avila?
Here.
And Mayor Emmanuel Estrada?
Here. Thank you, city clerk. Is there public communications?
We have one speaker, Mr. Don Rios.
Great.
Hello?
Hi, Mr. Rios, this is Mayor Estrada calling you from Baldwin Park. You have three minutes for your public communications.
Okay. Just start with the DUI roadblock that you guys put on this past week. I think that came out a little out of hand, especially with the things are right now with the people and everything. You know, it seems like you guys took some cars in because they didn't have no driver's license, which wasn't the point of checking for driver's license. This happened a couple of years back with Mayor Lozano and his little gimmicks for royal coaches. It seems like you guys are falling back into that little system and which is bad, especially right now. And another thing I had requested through public works, almost a little over a year, that they should go and talk to Caltrans at Barnes Park against the fence for the freeway. They still haven't done anything. And another request that I put was almost a year or a little over a year to put some speed bombs right there at Barnes Park because people go a little too fast and there's too many kids in the park. And somebody's gonna end up, you know, killing a kid or anybody, you know? So for, you know, another thing that I have to.
Mr. Rios?
Hello?
Yeah, I just want to remind you, this is, this is the special, this is the special meeting, so you, you have to talk about things on the agenda.
What was the agenda? I don't get the agenda.
Yeah, so, so we have a couple of items on the agenda, so if you want to talk during special, during the special meeting, you, you do have to talk about the items on the agenda or else you would have to do public communications on the seven o'clock regular meeting.
Okay, I'll, I'll talk on, on that too, that way the people know they were, you know, they are responding to their demands, you know? Because it seems like you guys are not doing it.
Yeah.
Okay.
Sure, and then we can address your, your issues there. So did you have any comment on any items on the agenda?
I'm sorry, mayor, he dropped.
Oh, okay, great. Well, yeah, so just for the record, special city council meetings do require you to talk about items on the agenda. If it's anything other than that, then it is best to speak during the regular meeting. So, uh, city, uh, city clerk, is there any other speakers?
No, that was the only one.
Great, so and then just to confirm with the city attorney, it is okay to move on, right?
Uh, yes, mayor, and you are correct, that is a legal requirement. It's not something that the council is asking or that the council is limiting in any way. It is a legal requirement that you can only talk about issues on the agenda in a special meeting, so you are correct.
Great, thank you. So at this moment, I will close public communications, and I believe that we have an open session with our director of finance, Rose Tapper.
Thank you, mayor, and just before Rose starts and while they get her PowerPoint going up, I just wanted to remind everybody, at the beginning of this fiscal year, we adopted a budget with an estimated deficit of $300,000. That included 10 to 15% cuts across all departments, furloughing of some part timers, and everybody in the state was projecting sales tax drops. We were able to, as Rose will go over, we were able to come up better than that with some additional savings from some retirements in the police department. And Baldwin Park didn't get hit quite as hard in the sales tax as many other cities did. So with that, if Rose and her PowerPoint are ready to go, we'll turn it over to her.
And Rose told me you are going to run the PowerPoint.
Uh, no, Mark, I, I don't have it. I, we sent it to you about an hour ago.
Hi, Mark. Hi, Mark, can you run it for me, please?
Okay, Dave, Dave?
Mark, I'm gonna need you to send it to me, I never got it.
Okay. Here we go. Terrible mayor and city council and the member of Baldwin Park community. I'm here tonight to present you the meet year budget to over, give you a overview of the general fund operating update. Can everybody see the PowerPoint?
No.
Rose, give me a second.
No, Rose, David's gonna put it up, just give him a second, we just sent it to him.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Yeah. Okay, go ahead, Rose.
Okay. Yes, and we go to the next page, to the summary page. Uh, here is the overview of the general fund operating budget. As Shannon mentioned earlier, at the beginning in of the budget adoption, we projected $350,000 in deficit. However, due to the teamwork and team effort of all the departments, we were able to continue to provide savings from salary and other area. And also, the taxes came in better as we expected. And so we are going to project it a smaller, much smaller deficit in about $18,000 compared to the originally adopted budget of $315,000. Next page, please. And this page will provide you more details in what's happening in the revenue projections and why we projected 1.15 million increases and us helping the city to reduce its deficit. And I also post the line item on the city's website under finance and under the budget. If anyone and any citizens want to see the line item detailed budget, they are welcome to visit the city's website. On this slide, as you may see, the property tax came in as, I mean, better than expected for about $82,000 and sales tax and came in better than expected, also the utility users tax and property tax in lieu of VLF and franchise tax also came in better than expected and business license also, and also license and permits. However, we see decrease in price penalties mainly due to the impact from the COVID-19. And that decrease were from the citations because of the COVID situation. The citation revenue came in much lower than the normal fiscal year. We expecting over $200,000 decrease in that area. Also, we expected decrease in use of money and property. That's mainly from the closing out of many programs in recreation. And we also see increases from charges for services that increase mainly come from the engineering fee. And you'll see over $500,000 increase from the miscellaneous revenue category. That was from the one-time settlement from the MRF settlement from city of Irwin there. Any questions on the revenue slide? If no questions, we can go to the next slide. This slide and provide you the, a little bit more detail in the general fund expenditures. And as you may see, the general fund expenditure has about $823,000 increase overall compared to the original adopted budget. However, it's still lower than the increase in revenue. That's why it helped the city reduce its deficit to $18,000 from $350,000. And as you may see, in the personnel cost, we have a decrease over $500,000. That's mainly from the retirement of about 10 officers throughout the year from police department. And we also have savings from our recreation personnel cost and some from finance department from the part-time intern position. That's where the main savings from and the maintenance, we have about $68,000 increase. That's from many different area. We, such as we had to pay some deals, applications. And we also have some maintenance increase in the phone charges or some furnitures, things like that in that combination. And the contractual, you see a may increase in that area. It is mainly caused by the anticipated legal fee. And with that, we projected the overall increases about $823,000. And in the next slide, you will see more detail. Yes?
I'm sorry, before you go to the next slide.
Shannon, can you?
Yeah, part of the increase.
You want to come on, yeah.
Part of the increase on contractual, that isn't that, um, the jail costs putting back into the budget also? A portion of that?
Yes, thank you, Shannon, yes. We put back about $392,000 in the jail services. Previously, we budgeted for $50,000 because we restore the jail services. So we put back about $390,000 there. So that increase is combination of the jail services and the legal fees.
Thank you, Rose.
Thank you, Shannon, for mentioning that. And this slide is providing you the information for the increase or decrease by department. And for administration, the increase mainly due to the legal fee, some of the legal fees and some furnitures that we have to replace in certain offices. And some of them cover the election costs. And for the community development, some increase is mainly come for the legal fee in, in relate to the cases that handled by that department. And the decrease from finance is from the, yes?
I'm sorry, can, can you clarify though?
Questions?
Yes, well, I'm sorry, very quickly, this is Robert Tafoya, city attorney. The increase in legal fees is not city attorney fees. These are fees from outside litigation, like these new lawsuits that are coming in that we're anticipating and all that sort of thing. But there will be no increases in any city attorney.
Yes. Yes, the city attorney for this current fiscal year and Robert agreed to assist reducing the deficit for the city. He agreed to charge the city on a fixed rate with $25,000 per month. And the legal fee here is related to couple of different legal or lawsuit or claims. Any questions?
I have a question. Rose, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, you said under community development, that had to do with some legal fees and also under administration legal fees? Is that what you said?
Yes, that for the reason we charged the legal fee to the community development debt call center, it has something with the signage with the freedom of speech related to the size claim. And Robert can further comment on that if there is more questions on that charge.
Okay, and then the other question, as you said, there was also fees for elections. Didn't we prior to that allocate money for elections? So why would there be another increase from that? Did it cost more than what we anticipated?
Actually, we budgeted also from prior year, however, we did not use all of them paid before, but it's a very, very small portion.
Do you know what, how much difference it was, the league, the election fees? How much more did we pay this, this time around compared to what we budgeted?
Are you talking about the legal fee?
No, the, you mentioned also that there was actually.
The election, the election fee? Yes, I can email you the detailed information after this presentation and the city council.
Okay, and then just to confirm the community development, some legal fees came from there because of the freedom of speech lawsuits, is that correct, Robert? They come from there?
Yeah, so that, that is the sign ordinance case that, you know, we've been defending with Diane DeFaleese. Those, that, those are those fees.
Okay.
And Rose, it would probably be good to get the city council a breakdown on your projection of all those legal fees too.
Thank you, Shannon.
Yes. And prior to this, because of the limitation, the time limitation, I emailed the details of all the line items with the explanation. And also, I have all the line item posted online. And however, for further detailed information, I can email the city council for a copy of the invoice and things like that to support the number. However, this number we show here is not for the actual cost that has been incurred. This is only a projection based on what have already happened.
Rose, just really quick question under the community development. So are you saying that the entire increase of, uh, are you saying that the entire increase of $442,265 pertains to the free speech litigation that we currently have?
Uh, no. That amount covers mostly for the projected legal fee. And there are small portions for other miscellaneous items such as the deals or the required training certifications that the co-enforcement officers has to attend and things like that. It's also not only for one case. And Ben can mention the other anticipation about the new project. We anticipated about $100,000 there for the legal fee. The increase I put it in here has not really happened yet. It's just a projection based on what is going to happen or continue to happen.
Got it, so just, just for clarification.
On the expenditure as, sorry. You may see the expenditure as February. And on that column, that represent what already happened.
Got it, but just for, just, just, just so I can get clarification on this. The, the increase of $442,265 is not all of it for legal? It's a portion of legal fees, but other items in the community development as well?
Yes. However, about 70% of them representing the anticipating increase in legal fee.
But, but that's not just the one.
That's not only for one claim, that, that's for a couple of claims.
Got it, thank you, Rose.
And I think like Shannon, we have a detail that would help us understand it a little better. Thank you.
We, we will get that, yeah, we'll get a breakdown of the.
I, I can email, I can email you, yes. And I, I already emailed the detail, but I can email further detail to list all the anticipated claims or lawsuits that go into that area.
And, and, and so, council member Damian, that probably includes not only the sign case, but the Dalewood case, you know, where we're fighting them with the hotel over there. There are several, yes, there are several cases that, you know, amount to that. So it's not like one case is being projected at, you know, hundreds of thousands of dollars, it's several, I think more than.
Got it, thank you.
We also have.
More than three, more than three cases.
Rose, does any of this include the PD cases that are recent?
Not in here, the PD will be included under the police department.
Okay.
Under the $680,000.
Yes.
Right, and I think also in community development was included. Ben, remind me the name of the street where we had the guy living in the camper squatting over there, disrupting the neighborhood, that was also.
Odd place, yeah, odd place.
Odd place, yeah.
I also, I also want to mention, there's also included $100,000 estimate legal fee for the new project. The torch project. Ben?
Yes, we have, we have.
Can you remember you proposed $100,000 legal fee for that project?
Yes, we have, we have, we need affordable housing expertise, legal services for the Torch Street project that is pending and, and a couple of other, other projects, affordable housing.
Okay, so I will email the city council what, what legal fee that we anticipated had with the increase in that area. And I, I am not going to go into the detail about the lawsuit or legal fee. And I can email to all of you after this presentation. So now I am going into the police department increase. That $680,000 increase. And the main portion is for the restore the services of the jail for about $390,000. And also, it covers the anticipated litigation and claims and all investigation fight by the police department. I'm, I'm sorry, it's not fight by the police department, that is within the police department, sorry.
Rose, I'm sorry, really quick question. You just mentioned that in the police, the 680, the 680,000 increase is mainly for the jail litigation and claims. But under contractual, where we have an increase of 1.24 million, you stated that 392,000 of that was for the jail services. So are you, are you putting it on, in both categories, under contractual and police?
Uh, no, we, we provide presentation under the category. And also, we want to show you where these causes from each department. We show the increase or decrease to you by departments. We also want to show it to you by category.
Perfect, got it, thank you, Rose.
You're very welcome.
I have a question too. In regards to the.
Yes.
So prior to this update, it was not budgeted for the jail, is that what that means? And now we are budgeting for the jail?
Original adaptive budget, the jail cost is not included in the very first column, the 18.876 million with the original adaptive budget in June 2019. And we updated the budget based on what has amended or what has, what has proposed.
Okay.
Okay. So under public works, we have a very small increase about $2,000. And that has to do with the freeze of certain position. You will see in a later slide. The, because most of their personnel costs are charged to special revenue funds. And now I want to talk about the recreation and community services. And we projected a kind of big decrease in their department mainly due to lots of programs have been closed. And we have lots of savings from the part timers because. And we have lots of savings from the part timers because of those programs are currently not happening. That's what the big savings from. And with that, uh with the increase and decrease, uh the bottom line uh is about hey, about eight hundred twenty three thousand dollars increase in expenditures. If no questions, we go to the next slide. So in this slide, uh we would like you to, we would like to show you the breakdown of the uh general funded uh transfer to subsidize other program or other funds. And annually, general fund subsidized the park maintenance. Uh this fiscal year, we subsidized the maintenance fund for about seven thousand six hundred seventy dollars. And for the property park funds, uh we, the general fund subsidized over a hundred twenty thousand dollars. And also, we annually we transfer about seven hundred thousand dollars to pay the uh outstanding uh refunding lease uh revenue bond, which we issue many years ago to fund the Morgan Park Community Center projects over there. So with that, we have a total transfer out from general fund for seven hundred ninety six thousand dollars. If no questions, we go to the next slide.
I still have a question, Rose, sorry.
Yes.
I was thinking back on the jail.
Yes.
Previous slide. So because I my memory doesn't, it's not working very well right now. So last budget, we asked that we do not include the jails, so it wasn't estimated in the budget of of twenty nineteen, of June twenty nineteen. What was it, or what was a proposal at that time that it jumped so much?
At that time, we said uh because we asked all the departments to provide ten percent reduction. So reduction, the police department proposed that they are going to close the jail services to provide up over three hundred thousand dollar savings. It was not included in the adapted budget in June.
I, okay, because I remember um that we did not agree in closing those that the jail. And I remember having those conversations. So you didn't budget in the jail at all, and that's why you have such a big increase in that?
So so what happened, council member, is in the budget, the jail cut um was instituted. But then the item came back before the city council with the options um of. And at that time, the option was partnering with Elmonte to use their jail um or other options to contract out. And then at that time, the council decided to go ahead and keep the jail open um and continue to contract it out.
Okay, thank you. That's that's exactly what I remember. So but I didn't recall that in the June budget, it was not budgeted for that. So now you're adding the fleet expenditures for the jail. It was not added in June of nineteen.
Correct.
What it, what is the total amount just for the jail, for the police?
Rose, I think you.
It's about, this, it's about of about four hundred thousand dollars.
Okay.
Or other smaller fees. And I can provide you the exact amount uh after this presentation. I can email you the exact amount.
Okay, thank you, Rose.
Next, next slide please. So this slide and let me show you that uh community development and public works propose to unfreeze a certain position due to their critical operation need. And community development uh ask for unfreeze their assistant planner position. Because currently, they only have two steps. Handle all the tasks and duties for the planning department. And if we have any more question, uh Ben can comment on that. And I remember Ben already sent some information to the city council prior to this meeting. And if there is no question, I go to the next item that public works propose to unfreeze the engineering assistant position. And also, they propose to unfreeze the senior maintenance worker position. However, this position will be uh offset with the savings from the elimination of the public work supervisor positions. They also propose to unfreeze for public works maintenance assistance position. Uh these four positions are part time position. Any question on this slide? If no, we are go to the next one. So with the projections, we we want to show you the bar chart uh with the overall review for the general fund uh reserve for the last ten years. And with the current projection, we only see about eighteen thousand dollar decrease in the general fund reserve. However, uh I very confident we can wash the eighteen by June. And if if we can receive um all revenues such as cannabis revenue and we can also see can uh departments continue provide savings in Florida. For we, for example, with recreation, uh if we are not going to open all the programs by June, we will still see a big savings from there to close the gap uh from the deficits. The eighteen thousand is just a very conservative projection in deficit. Uh next slide please. And this is the summary for the projected revenue and projected expenditures. Next slide please. Also, in this budget, uh with the request and with what has happening with the Be Proud, we added the, we created a new enterprise fund for the Be Proud Utility District Project. Enterprise Fund and we treated enterprise fund just like the private business. And I have the Be Proud staff here. Barbara or Kathy, answer any questions you may have on this proposed budget. If any city council has question regarding this budget.
Rose, I I do, I and Shannon, I maybe you can answer this. I know that I requested a study session for the council just on the Be Proud program, so that we can kind of go more into detail regarding the tenure projection that we went over, Shannon?
Yes, um and so, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, I was gonna say that way we can discuss it further and more in detail.
Correct. And this that you're looking at is the current budget. Um it is balanced um with all of the rate pairs um at parity with Southern California Edison. So currently paying the same price. Um there are some exit fees and other issues that we need to talk about um for the next um upcoming budget, and we will be scheduling a study session for that information.
Thank you.
And Mark, um if you, Mark or David, um council member Hernandez is waiting to be let in also. Okay, Rose, go ahead.
Okay, if there is no question, uh uh we go to the next slide. So this will uh conclude my uh presentation for the fiscal year two thousand twenty twenty one projection. And I want to thank the honorable mayor and members of the city council for your efforts and commitment to make the city a better and safer place and for the residents and the community. I also want to thank the E team and finance staff who assisted with the preparation of this mid-year budget projection. Thank you again.
Thank you, Rose. And so just a reminder, this is on the um open agenda. Basically, to receive and file, as you know, the the budget is just a planning document. Um and we're um making some adjust adjustments midway through the year. I think as Rose mentioned, the deficit is very small. It's probably small enough that um if things go well with the economy opening up and sales tax coming back in again, that we could possibly and um in hopefully in the year with the balanced budget.
And Shannon, we can make amendments and uh changes to this budget, right?
Um that's correct.
Rose, I just had a question going back to the general fund reserve balance. Um can you just clarify for me?
Yes.
Now, which account is this nine point seven million dollars uh in?
Is the general fund one zero zero.
And which bank account is this in?
Um, the uh in the uh government sector, we don't have a separate bank account for each individual funds. Uh we have a bank account to put all the money in the checking or invest the money to life or other CD. However, we have a separate account for housing and for successor agencies and for the nonprofit organization. And other than that, and the general fund and with the special revenue funds are all in one uh checking account. And because with the operation, we pay payroll and things like that and building maintenance, so we issue a check to pay bills and payroll from that account. However, we keep very good track of how the money come in and how the money spend using all the fun numbers a string of all the account numbers. For example, we have general fund for one hundred and we have gas tax for two forty. And giving you an example, if we get gas tax from the state for two hundred thousand dollars, we put it in the checking. However, when my staff booked them and they use fund two four zero to book the cash for the gas tax. So when we run a report, we will see the gas tax going into the right fund, not going into the general fund. And when they book that transaction, it has to be revealed by the accounting manager. And also will be have a final review by me, that we want to ensure that the money is recording in the right place and in the right fund.
So you just shift the money around from your general fund to the correct account that you're going to be charging to. Is that correct?
Sorry, say that one more time.
I said, so from the general fund, you shift the money around to the correct account they should be allocated to.
Uh yes.
And I think, Rose, you know, um correct me if I'm wrong, but probably the best way to explain this is is the money's not necessarily ser separated by fund in the bank accounts, but it's separated on the ledgers, uh the accounting ledgers that the city keeps track of.
Yes, yes. Then also in the city's uh financial uh computers, I mean, financial system. We currently use a a financial software called Tyler in Cote d'Alene.
So, Rose, so the general fund and the general fund reserve is basically, in a sense, all in one bank account. Example, let's just say Chase. And then from that specific bank account, obviously, your Tyler system will, you know, labeled whatever money you're transferring into whatever fund, like the one hundred or two forty. But in a sense, everything, this this whole nine point seven million is all in one bank account, right? Not in two or three separate bank accounts?
Uh yes, however, I want to also mention that whole nine million not necessarily just stay in bank account. Uh we do a daily cash flow analysis because the bank checking account earn the city very little interest. So we will put them in a life or in money market on CD for idle money. We only put uh enough money in the checking to meet the daily operation need.
Got it. That's the one of, that's the one account we were looking over where it's basically collecting a higher interest and it's the money's just sitting there. We're generating more revenue with its interest that we're collecting, and you're just basically shifting into the regular checking account just to pay out your daily operation cost, right?
Yes, and I also want to uh let you know. Oh, uh that's why you also see we provide you a monthly treasurer report to show you all the money for all the funds where they are. And you will see in the monthly treasurer report that we show you all the bank account, money market or CD or life.
Got it. Thank you.
Combination of all the money that are in.
Thank you, Rose. Any other questions from council? Okay, if not, that ends our presentation.
Great. So I think at this moment, we can recess to close session.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.